All right, it is 3:00 PM, Monday, September 16th, and we call this workshop session of the Lewisville City to order. We do have a quorum. Reminder, all the audio in this room is picked up by those microphones even if you're sitting on the back row. First up, we have Discussion of Consent and Regular Agenda Items. So, Council, if you check your packets, I'm doing the invocation, and I have Council Member Meredith with the pledges. Item C1, Public Hearing, Continued Public Hearing of Ordinance Amending the Zoning. That's for Lady Tesala and Essex Boulevard. Questions or comments on that one? We may have some options on that. Just because it'll be continued conversation, we can, of course, close that public hearing. We can continue it to another date certain. We may decide that there's a motion that we want to put in place, and so we'll need to talk with that. If there's a third option, we may need to talk with Liz about what's legal and what's not, depending on what the conversation brings forth for tonight. Item 2, Public Hearing, Consideration of Ordinance, Adopting the Fiscal Year 24/25 Tax Rate. Very specific language on this one, just so everybody has that. Item 3, Public Hearing, Consideration on Ordinance, Amending the Fee Schedule.
On this item, we have at your place correction ordinance. We just had some minor changes we needed to make, nothing that was substantive. But we do need to say in your recommendation, which will be on your screen, that we're reauthorizing the existing fees as well, but that will be prompted for y'all as well.
Any other questions? Item E, Inc. Agenda, Approval and Agreement Between the City of Lewisville and Romo Company, Construction Management Services for Timber Tree, Hyke &amp; Bike Trail. Item 5, Resolution of City Council, Authorizing Agreements Regarding Disbursement of Grant Funding. So, this is our CBPG. Item 6, Approval of Professional Services Agreement with Teak Knoll and Perkins for Drainage Analysis. This is the development down by the DCPA property. Item 7, Resolution of City Council to Cast Our Vote for the Region 8 Director of the Texas Municipal League.
Do you know me?
I reached out to Mayor Andy Nolan of the City of Lake Dallas. She's very involved in Region 8 and asked for her recommendation, and she stated that she felt that the incumbent was doing an excellent job. So, I'd be happy to take her recommendation with me.
Thank you for the contact.
Item 8, Consideration of Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, Amending the Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year October 1 to September 30, 2024. So, these are all our supplemental appropriations and various funds, kind of the one-time, what we move everything over. Any questions about that? Item G, Reports. I fully anticipate that Patrick will continue to be in the lead for the pie-in-the-face competition. Last I saw, I was in fourth place, and happily so. We do have -- we do have closed session for Real Estate, Economic Development, and Personnel tonight. So, if there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and move into workshop session. Item B, Legislative Update. We have our Community Relations and Tourism Director, James Kunkie, and Brandy Bird with Bird Abic's seat to present on that topic.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Every two years, we come to you with this, and it is that time again, even though it might seem like we have a little long breathing room. This is a little earlier in the calendar than we usually come to you. In the past, we've come to you in late October, early November, for the first run, and come back in December. But we're trying to advance our timeline a little bit to get more in line with some of our other cities and school districts, as there's a lot of chance for coordination with this one. So, we'll start with -- if I can do this one. Oh, I'm going to start with a clicker. I can probably do a clicker. Just start with a -- I cannot do a click. Can you click for me, too? So, just starting with a recap of -- so, it is September 2016 of 2024. This is a legislative update. There's an arrow bouncing around here.
It's -- it's jumping.
So, thank you for coming. Okay. Hey, we're flesh and bones. So, there's our pile of slides we can skip back. So, this is -- again, it's 25/26. It's 25 Texas legislature, but it also carries over into 26, because we do have federal issues listed. I can't hold anything. It's going so well. So, here's our legislative team. Brandy Bird is a key member of our team. She's a legislative consultant, spends a lot of time down in Austin, knows the people, the names, the phone numbers, the contacts. City Council, you are a very important part of this. Not only do you adopt a legislative agenda, you then have a chance to communicate it both before and during the session, to your constituents, to your neighbors and friends, to civic groups, or actually in front of the legislature. Management and Department Directors falls in here. We gather input from various state associations, and for issues that we have seen bubbling up that we think might come to a head during the session so we can prepare for them. Surprises during legislative session are never good, never. I'm on there because I did the slides. So, this is the process we follow. We adopt an agenda every two years, and the agenda really starts with our priority issues list. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Once we have that, if there are local bills that we want to file and pursue, such as the Massage Parlor Bureau bill a while back, and we had a few others we've done, the one for crime control district elections, we then work with our local legislation delegation to try and find someone who will sponsor that bill for us, and we'll file that so we can pursue passage. At this point, we've not identified any in 2025. That obviously could change. During the session, as issues come up, especially your priority topics we'll talk about today, we will submit letters of support or opposition, sometimes from the mayor, sometimes from city staff, depends on the issue. We will sometimes send people down to testify in person, again, sometimes an elected official, sometimes a staff member. If it's a police issue, it's hard to beat a police chief in uniform, right? If it is more of a tax issue or a public trust issue, it's hard to beat someone who's already earned the public trust by winning an election in our city. So, we base it upon the need, the immediacy, and frankly, availability. So, we'll present testimony where it's appropriate. And then finally, if an issue arises, and this happens occasionally, if an issue arises that is not addressed anywhere in our agenda document, we have to come to you for a resolution of support. For example, three sessions ago, I believe, a bill came up affecting microbreweries and allowing microbreweries to have certain types of sales at their site. We had a brewery in town that was very interested in that, came and talked to staff, talked some council members. We said, "Yeah, this is something we can support. It would benefit our business, benefit our old town." It was not in our agenda, so we had to come to you for a resolution to add it. Fortunately, after that, we still had time to go and testify, but late in the session, things were moving so quickly, we sometimes can't. That is why we have a very lengthy list we're not going to go through today, but it's available in your backup, that covers every topic we can think of and a few that maybe we didn't. So, that's a comprehensive list. That's what we have to keep coming back to. We've divided those into seven categories to make it easier to track things down. Local authority, local revenue, parks funding, park safety, social equity, transportation, and water. Probably the biggest fight Texas ever has is over water, and we definitely want to make sure we have access to water going into the future. And the priority issues, which Brandy's going to talk to you about, priority issues are what you get to select, and this is generally, we've had as many as nine. We generally aim for six or seven. We had eight last year, seven the year before, and these are the, what you believe to be the most important topics for us to pay attention to. And the reason this is important, I'll give you an example from last session, when both the House and Senate said they were going to reduce the number of bills filed. They didn't. There was thousands of bills filed, and more than a thousand of them we were tracking as they could have impact on Lewisville. Some very minor impact, some very major impact, some good, some bad, but we were tracking a thousand bills. We cannot possibly respond to all thousand bills. So, we focus on these priority issues that you're going to be able to select. That's where our attention goes. That's where Brandy will spend most of her time, and if other things rise, we can still respond to them. We just don't give them quite as much time, because you've decided where our priority needs to go. That also would include any bills that we filed locally. And I'm going to pass it over to Brandy.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, just to talk a little bit about how we want you to think about the priority issues. So, these are really the issues that rise to the top that are most important to you. As James said, our goal is, you know, a max of seven to eight, because we're going to then take this priority issues document once you finalize it and go with you to sit down with our legislative delegation and walk through these issues. So, I want you to kind of think about it through that lens as you're deciding what issues are going to make the priority list. And of course, we want to make sure that these are the most important issues to you, that they also have a likelihood of happening, which is also why we want to kind of narrow that focus. So, the feedback that you gave to staff, these are the four issues that rose to the top that were chosen by multiple members. Sales tax sourcing, affordable housing, preserve the voice of local government, and support state investment in public transit. These are the issues, these are the additional issues that were raised by council members, some multiple, some single council members that raised these issues. So, I'm going to keep going, but we'll come back to this if you want to. So, just keep in mind what your priorities are as we continue to talk about this. So, a couple of suggestions as well from staff. Staff visited with the department directors, and these are a couple of issues that may make it a priority list if you so desire. Increasing TaxDOT's funding for maintenance and litter control, and then also the Cameron County of trouble housing corporation.
Can we pause there so I can explain what that Cameron County HFC is? So, Cameron County is a county that's in South Texas, and they have made their business to buy up multifamily projects throughout the state of Texas. And then, as a partnership with an, as an HFC, what that does is it takes it off the tax rolls in other cities, and we do have a property in Lewisville that was taken off the tax roll because of Cameron County's HFC. We have lost to the tune of 500, a little over 500,000 revenue a year because of Cameron County. And so, this is, there is nothing in the HFC, I should say HFC, and I apologize, that was my fault, in the HFC statute that says you can't, you can't, you can, that limits your ability to go into other cities and do this. So, basically, why do they do this? One, it does promote affordable housing, but two, they buy up these properties because it takes it off the tax roll so a developer can then develop without any taxes going forward. I think there's a period of time, but during that timeframe, the HFC gets a fee. I know at least one of our neighboring cities, Ulyss, had the same thing happen to them, and the deal that was made there was 15% of the taxes that are forgone by the local entities in Ulyss, as it would be for Lewisville, 15% of that in total. So, state, I mean, not state, city, county, and school district, 15% of those that the developer saved is going to the, to the HFC. So, they're bringing in local dollars off of our backs. And so, the interest there is to go to Austin, and I think there is movement right now to try to close that loophole. There's several cities that are very up in arms about that, but making sure that that loophole gets closed. Don't get me wrong, I have tried to push even harder to say, "Well, I want to, I want the right to go take property off of their tax rolls and collect a fee." I'm not sure that's, once they close that loophole, we can do that. And obviously, we would advocate for any other type of reimbursement, but I'm not sure that's going to happen either. So, but we would be going after a legislative change to close that.
So, this is a funding play, because I'm not buying that this is, they're attacking affordable housing across the state. That seems like the veil, the veil.
Sounds like a budget game. Definitely, this is a revenue maker for that, for that city. It did create affordable housing in our community, so the affordable housing, they bought out Oak Village Apartments, which is on business, not business, it's on State Highway 121, and the percentage, there's 696 units, 70 units were restricted to 60% AMI. 30% of the units were restricted to 75%, 10% of the units, that's 70 units, were 80% AMI. 40% were restricted to 140% AMI, and then 69 units, the remaining 10, were unrestricted. So, there is affordability in there, but...
But they're out of the lane. We've got our man.
This is a campaign.
Absolutely. Yeah. That's not what it already is. It's got to be a funding maker anyway. I agree. I didn't know that's happened. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Claire, for that explanation. So, based on all of your feedback and working with your staff, these are our recommended priorities, based on what we've heard from you, and also some of the staff recommendations that Claire just outlined under the affordable housing category. So, sales tax sourcing, responsible property tax relief, that's something that we had on the legislative agenda last session. We expect the legislature to address property tax relief again. This gives us an opportunity to kind of focus and make some commentary on the kind of property tax relief that we would like to see. Affordable housing, including local control of PFCs and HFCs that Claire just mentioned. Support state investment in public transit. Support state funding for the TSTC, land acquisition and construction. Preserve the voice of local government. And so, then the question to you is, do you agree with this recommended priority list? Is there anything that you want to take off or add? And these are truly the issues that we're going to sit down with you and our legislative delegation and walk through as Lewisville's priorities, so I want to make sure that you're very comfortable and that this truly reflects your priorities.
Can I also add one other thing? With that, actually, Mayor, you may want to talk about where we are in TSTC.
So, TSTC came for a visit, and we're very pleased with the location. The process that they have is that they, they open up a county, which they've done, Perdent County. Then, the next legislative session, they go and they ask for capital funds to help get the facilities and whatnot up out of the ground. That'll be anywhere from 100 to 150 million. I think they've asked for 150, I think, is what I saw. So, that legislation is already down there, making its rounds. I've also sent it to Ben Bubgardner, Crona Temmish, and I'll be sending it to Lance Tannenberger and the rest of the delegation before too long. But that, also, with that means they're also, while they're doing that push down there, they're also getting ready to put somebody on staff here in Dent County to start doing fundraising as well this year. So, we're really excited that we've got traction and movement, but this is, this would be a big, anything that we can get from the state to help support this coming up out of the ground means that I don't have to necessarily get that from the private sector or, you know, municipal donations, county donations, those types of things. It helps to soften that, that hit a little bit more. I don't see any reason why we couldn't advocate for this. I think it's just a natural next step, and it is the process that they've done on every other campus.
Was it bill in the last legislative session that would have given state funding to TSTC, and it almost passed in the, you know, days, weaning days of the session? So, I think there's a good chance of passage to the session on this as well.
But we got to, we got to keep it for our delegation.
So, at this point, I know it says other items Council wants to add. You want to give some of the back, some of the upcoming background of what we expect, and then we can go back to that and see if there's any other.
So, this is kind of the calendar going forward. So, bill filing starts November 11th. It's the week after the election. Typical timing for bill filing, the first day of the session is January 14th. Council Member Meredith did ask when Dent County Days was going to take place this session. They haven't set those dates yet, but I will be tracking that closely. We should know in the next week or so, just to keep that in mind for your calendars as well. The last day for bill filing is March 13th. It's the first 60 days of the session, and then signed by is June 2nd, the last day of the session. The governor has 20 days to veto a bill, so June 22nd. So, that's kind of the timeframe. We'll get into the dynamics of the session in just a second, but I do anticipate there being multiple special sessions this cycle, just given where things are going. So, what we know, we know that both chambers will largely have the same leadership. We also know that some of their top priorities for this session are border security, school choice, vouchers, strengthening the power grid, and also more property tax relief. We know that we'll have one new state representative replacing Representative Allen. There are two candidates in that race, Mitch Little and Dietrich DeBurr. And then also, we know we will have one new senator replacing Senator Springer, and there are two candidates in that race as well, Brent Haggenbu and Dale Frey. So, soon, we will know who will be representing Lewisville from those two districts. And then what we don't know, we don't know for certain who the House Speaker will be, although I certainly give it a 95% certainty that it will be Dave Phelan. If it is Speaker Phelan, then we know the lieutenant governor and the speaker are, tensions are highest as they have ever been. So, it's going to be a huge challenge to get any legislation passed this session if that's the dynamics that we're facing. So, keep that in mind as we're thinking about our priority list as well. And then we don't know how many bills will be filed that could impact Lewisville, but it's usually hundreds, if not close to thousands, so we'll have our hands full with that as well. And now, we go back to the priority issues. I just want to revisit this to make sure that y'all are comfortable with this list, that you agree with your priorities, if there's anything you want us to track or add.
I'm interested in the TaxDOT funding for maintenance and litter control, if it's going to do any good, because if that happens, you know, is that, is TaxDOT, if they get the money, they're going to do anything, so.
That's something that we discussed, and so I think we do have a little bit of research to do on that item, but TaxDOT's appropriations, funding does come through the appropriations bill in several categories, and so we believe that if the maintenance funding was increased, then potentially, TaxDOT would invest that money. But it would be a commission decision whether they invest that money in more litter control.
And I think if anything, I mean, I know, not on Almer Rose, but on 121 and on 35, what I've heard is if there was going to be increases from TaxDOT, that it would be, I think they had, they budget for two, two passes a year, and they would bring it up to three passes a year. Obviously, we're doing it, I think, every other week. We're cleaning 35, and I think we're expanding that to be even more frequent, because we're not, even, every other week is not keeping up with it. So, it is a, it is a drop in the bucket, but we might get three instead of two passes.
It's nuts, because I walked all, I mean, I walked, I watched all the way from Austin, that's when I called you, and it was certain areas were just absolutely pristine, and then bam. You get just into Dallas, well, with the construction on 35, but Lewisville, none of them look like Lewisville, didn't.
It's atrocious. I mean, every day I pass by this, somebody's, you know, front door lounger sitting in the, in the right of way. It's just, and that's not the only thing, it's just...
Yeah, and in the right of way is not anything the city's going to be able to do. We're doing outside the right of way.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Sounds like we have some consensus on that.
Okay, good. Other thoughts, Council?
We're going to keep moving. Yep. Okay? We're good?
Good. We'll take care of that. We'll add the TaxDOT funding, and we'll start considering the specific wording behind these priority issues, and then work with the schedule meetings with the legislative delegation.
So, did we give you, I'm sorry, I missed this. I know we talked about the PFC for Cameron County, but did we give direction?
It's in there. That was intended to cover that.
There it is. Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
I just didn't call it out specifically.
Perfect. Thank you.
We will come back for final approval of the document fairly quickly, and hopefully in October.
Great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
All right, we have no further action to be taken in the workshop session, so we will go ahead and recess for about five minutes, and we'll start the regular session at 7:00 It's 7:00. We're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First off, tonight is the invocation. If you all would please join me in a moment of introspection. Council Member Meredith, would you lead us in the flags?
Please join me in the pledges.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected flag, I congratulate you to be Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Item C1, Continued Public Hearing, Consideration of Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance by Amending Ordinance Number 0428-22-ZON to Rezone Approximately. 10.207 acres located in northeast corner of Lady Tesala Avenue and Essex Boulevard, legally described as 10.207 acres out of the Amos Singleton survey, abstract 1138, from Plan Development Multifamily III District to Plan Development Townhouse II District. To amend the Plan Development Concept Plans Set Forth in Exhibit 5B, the Realm Subdistrict Concept Plan thereto by amending the Concept Plan for 50.562 acres located north of Lady Tesala Avenue, legally described as 50.562 acres out of the Amos Singleton survey, abstract 1138, and the Benjamin Shunover survey, abstract 1209, as requested by Patricia Font of McAdams on behalf of Eric Stanley of Braco Land CH LLC, the property owner, case number 24-04-2-PZ. The City Council opened the public hearing for this item on August 19th, 2024, and continued the public hearing to the September 9th, 2024 City Council meeting. The public hearing was continued again on September 16th, 2024 City Council meeting to provide additional time to update the proposed concept plan and reflect the details discussed at the Community Neighborhood Meeting hosted by the applicant on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. On January 3rd, 2022, the City Council adopted the Castle Hills Plan Development District Ordinance Number of 0428-22-ZON that incorporated all provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement along with the variances to the agreement approved since 1996. The PD allows changes to base zoning districts and the subdistrict concept plans following the zoning processes in the Unified Development Code. The applicant is requesting to change the base zoning district on 10.207 acres from Plan Development Multifamily III District to Plan Development Townhouse II District to allow for a front-entry townhome community where multifamily development had originally been planned. The proposed changes also necessitate an amendment to the approved concept plan. The concept plan for the Realm South Subdistrict is being amended in its entirety. However, the change only impacts 50.562 acres, which includes the 10.207 acres proposed for rezoning. The proposed concept plan amends, amendment consists of the addition of the proposed townhomes along with a reconfiguration of the remaining multifamily units. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously 5 to nothing on August 6th, 2024. It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. I do have Michelle Berry, our Planning Manager, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have three public comment requests, or, well, two and a request to be available. Daniel Young?
Michelle has a presentation. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Daniel, can we, just for a second, I moved too quick. Michelle has a, has a presentation, so my apologies, but you will be first in the queue. Sorry about that, Michelle.
No worries. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a brief update and a synopsis of what happened at the neighborhood meeting before we got into the public hearing tonight. Myself and Richard Lukey did attend that neighborhood meeting, and so you kind of already gave a little bit of a history, but on September 4th, there were about 40 residents in attendance. The primary concerns were the proximity of the buildings to Lady Tesala and the homes across the street, and also the traffic that would be there at full buildout. Again, this is just the maps showing the current base zoning district and where that base zoning district would be changed from MF3 to Townhouse 2. They're not able to see it on their screens. Is that a, is James Kunkie here? I'm not sure if that's a technology issue. Wait, I think we're fixing it right now. There we go. Thank you, Steve. So, you can see the area outlined in yellow is the area that was, or is zoned, has a base zoning of multifamily III, which is proposed to change to Townhouse 2. And here, you can see the area of the concept plan that is proposed to be amended to accommodate the townhome development. So, at that meeting on September 4th, the developer came in with a presentation and did, did offer a 50-foot setback. So, from the back of curb of Lady Tesala, it would be a 50-foot setback. That would be a publicly accessible open space. Within that setback, there would be benches, birmingham, canopy trees, a meandering sidewalk. The trees would be kind of on alternating row. On the back side, they showed an exhibit with an open-style fence, and again, they were committing to make that publicly accessible open space. During the course of the discussion, based on the neighbor's concern, they committed to reducing those buildings that are immediately across from Lady Tesala, so between Lady Tesala and Lady Betty, to four stories in height, and in having that four stories as the limitation. They also agreed to plant larger caliper trees than are required to go up to a four-inch caliper tree. caliper tree. And they also talked about making sure that there's not gates on that south side to discourage the apartment residents from parking on the street there and clogging up the street with a lot of on-street parking, so that they would be more encouraged to park in the parking that's provided by the apartment complexes themselves. And then there was further detailed discussion on the fence materials at the townhome property where it's being rezoned. Those fence materials would be masonry columns with board on board between those columns. And at the multifamily, that would be masonry columns with a open style tubular steel or wrought iron looking type fence. If privacy was desired, then shrubs might be used to help provide some, some screening for the multifamily amenities on the other side, and that's because it's a softer look for anyone traveling down the street. So that was our kind of synopsis of the neighborhood meeting. This is a rendering provided by the developer, just to kind of illustrate what that could look like. And to address the traffic concerns, the original traffic impact analysis was not able to be located. However, McAdams, their current engineer, provided a capacity analysis and concluded that there's adequate capacity on the roadways. Full traffic impact analysis will be completed at the time of engineering site plan. Each multifamily project, as they go through the process, does have to submit an engineering site plan. Improvements that might be triggered by those could include intersection improvements, signals, deceleration lanes, turn lanes, et cetera. So in summary, staff is recommending approval. P and Z recommended approval five to zero, and it is a simple majority vote by the council to approve this item tonight.
Michelle, can you go back to the concept plan that showed, the original concept plan that's existing right now? That one, so thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was clear to the public as well as to council. On the left is the existing concept plan. None of that front area is, is required to be dedicated, and I think you guys understand that, to the public. Right now, as it's dra, as it's written, it could be fenced in and made part of the amenities to that multifamily. So although there is a reduction in the amount of setback that's provided, at the same time, there is a gain of providing access to the public that wasn't there before. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Well, and staff is available for any questions.
Michelle, before, before you step down, I'm looking at page four of the traffic study by McAdams. And I, I don't know how to read these accurately, but there's two cells that are yellow, 97, 90.7%. Can you explain what those, are they calling out a concern? What is that trying to tell me?
That's showing that those areas are getting close to the carrying capacity of the roadway. And so with the TIA, those would probably be areas our traffic impact, our traffic engineer, who unfortunately isn't available tonight, would, would look more closely at. But he did review that analysis before this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, I'm sorry. I had trouble getting my mic on. Can you, you mentioned a few of the things that, some of the back and forth with, is there some additional public comment, just for further insight? Some additional, additional comments that you could share, kind of what the context of that was during that meeting?
Yeah, I think the, the major concern in the meeting was that the multifamily was much closer than they thought it was, based on the information that was made available to them when they bought their homes. And I think that came up in some of the public hearings, is unfortunately, some of the information was not very clear. Looked at some of that that was sent out to us, and the distances are fairly similar to what's in the original concept plan. But it was really the, the proximity of the buildings seemed to be one of the larger concerns, and then there was also traffic concerns with the neighborhood. And so the neighbors were desiring to see if the buildings could be pushed back any farther. There was a lot of discussion of trade-offs in terms of setbacks for heights of buildings at that meeting.
Okay, so I guess, really quickly, you just said, when you look at the original concept, that the setbacks are similar to what was there?
So one of the neighborhoods, neighbors had sent us an image that showed ponds on the north side of Lady Tesala. There were still multifamily on the north side of those ponds in that original concept that they had seen when they purchased their homes.
Right. But I thought you said that the, the distance between the multifamily, it was about the same as 50 feet?
No, it was more close to the original concept plan.
Okay, which was closer to?
The plan on the left.
Right, but what, what's the number?
Let me clarify, so the, originally, it was 40 feet when they first came to you last time, was 40 feet.
No, I'm talking about the original one.
Oh, the original one. It was probably closer. It varied. There were portions that got closer, but around 150 to 200 feet.
Okay, it's, it's kind of hard to gauge the scale on this, so just, just asking out of curiosity.
Other questions for Michelle? All right, well, we will continue the public hearing. Daniel Young, thank you for your patience, sir.
Hello, City Council. Daniel Young, 733 Lady Tesla Avenue, Lewisville. Thank you again for allowing me to speak in front of you. I know I emailed all of you today, so I'll just highlight again what I went over. So, you know, I stood before you seven days ago, when it was again tabled, but I mentioned a few things. I mentioned the lack of the traffic study that was presented. We've kind of been thrown this attitude, like, trust us, it's been done, so just trust us. So, and two days later, this traffic study has been presented from the developer. So this traffic study is very, less than a week old. I find the timing kind of curious, because this project has been in development for years. So where is this traffic study that this project has been, you know, based on? So also, you know, I don't have any comment on the findings. I'm not an expert in these kinds of things. I'm not an engineer, so I can't say whether that's valid or not. But I do believe it's a conflict of interest, it's developed, it's brought up by the developer. So I don't find the findings to be valid. Well, I, I'm sorry, I can't say that it's not valid, but I have, I have questions about the conflict of interest. Regardless, I accept the increase in population. The apartments are going to be there no matter what. So we're not questioning that, we're just questioning the density of the buildings. And we find that 50 feet is not sufficient. We're asking for 75 to 100, and perhaps more landscaping, to kind of compensate and create a buffer for us. So we're asking to table it again, so we can bring Mr. Stanley back to the table, and we can talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question about that, about a topic that was brought up, because I don't, I don't know for sure. The, the traffic study that was done recently, last week, is this common for the developers to hire somebody who does own traffic studies, or is this uncommon?
Yes, it's common for the developer to hire.
All right, thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, hi, Hina Narang, 817 Lady Tesala Drive. Thank you so much, Mr. Stanley, for meeting us and hearing all our concerns. It was a good conversation that we had, and thank you to all the council members for taking the time. I know we have been rapidly, and we have probably been in most of the public hearings now. There were just a few concerns that I wanted to highlight from my email that we had sent today. Mr. Stanley did hear us and tried to give in to some fair demands, like having a good segregation. But getting back to the point, we did discuss in the prior public hearing, we were told it's going to be 40 feet. When we did have the meeting, he offered us 50 feet. So the segregation still seems to be a little less, so like the Planning and Zoning Committee mentioned, it compared to the previous plan, it was 200 feet, and now we are down to 50 feet. So the segregation does seem a little lesser than what we had anticipated, and we do understand American legends and bright reality are nowhere connected, and on, on paper, we do not connect them. But we were sold something based on, we did pay a premium to stay on the street, considering there would be, if not ponds or green spaces, accessible to us, but at least a segregation between the two. So like now, my neighbors will be seeing townhomes, but we will now be stuck with some community and a four-story building. Apart from that, the traffic study, we are no experts. We actually, our neighbors reconvened on message and email today. We wanted to understand the traffic study, just understand the number of cars that was said, because I think one of the disclaimer on one of the pages did mention that Lady Betty, peak hours are not considered. So there were some caveats that were there in the traffic study, considering maybe only three hours in the day during which we could go forward. We are no experts, we would need some opinions and go through the traffic study. So considering this, these are some of our concerns as neighbors that we would like to raise. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Annie Vargis, 713 Lady Tesala, Lewisville, Texas. Thank you, council people, for letting me talk, and thank you to Mrs. Stanley, he did meet with us. So for the last couple of meetings that we met, they said there is a traffic study. It was done in 2014, now it is missing. So my, my first question was, if, obviously Castle Hills was next by the Lewisville city, and so where did the, how did you approve the tapestry that, without a traffic study? I mean, how did even that come about? So if that, if, and this was done supposedly in 2014, with all these concert plans, and then tapestry comes in, without a traffic study, it looks like. And then my other question is, they are talking about 2,600 multifamily units. Vin Haven opens to rail, and also on the other side, Castle Hill, individual homes. Those, Vin Haven has two lanes each way. Lady Betty has one way each way. Now, I, I actually did not read through the traffic study, but now it is being said that the peak hour study is not done. 2,600 homes coming up, I mean, the traffic, so that's minimum 2,600 cars coming into Lady Betty without a traffic study. And this traffic study suddenly comes up, like two days ago. That's one. And yet another one is, we were all promised when we signed, and I know it doesn't, you, I don't know whether you understand the magnitude of betrayal that we feel. I know Mr. Stanley said that American legend is not part of his, obviously it is, because it says in the, in the website. And we all prayed, I mean, I did not pay premium, but I know the others in there have paid a premium price for this. And, and we were promised, like the fountain and all that stuff, for 200 feet. But now it's all gone. So we are willing to compromise, and that's what we were telling Mr. Stanley when we met that day. We are willing to compromise, you know, because some of those pictures, if you see, it is, even though it says 50 feet, it's, the edge of that building is going to be right next to my nose. You know, it's not 50 feet consistently all over the place. It's just going here and there. And there is, right in the middle, there is a garden. It's got nothing to do with us. So we are asking if you can put, you know, more trees in that median, so that it, so that to block off, and then also, if you can get minimum, at least at the minimum 70 feet from, at the nearest point of that building, to be from Lady Tesala. And, you know, any environmental study done? With all this green space being gone, all this extra traffic that's going to be coming out, 2,600 cars in one way? And so I hope you table it. I hope you understand our concern, and how we were being, you know, betrayed about this, and we are willing to negotiate, and saying that, okay, at minimum 75 feet. I hope you listen to us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I do have Alan Gonzalez, 805 Lady Tesla Avenue, here, does not wish to speak, but he is in I also have Mr. Eric Stanley, 901 Carlisle Drive. He is here in support and available for questions. Counsel, we've got, I've got no other public comment at this time, so if there are any comments or questions that counsel has, great, we can take those now. If not, we can also entertain a motion to close the public hearing and continue conversation about approval or not.
So I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, I don't know if I would, I don't know if I would close the public hearing, because that locks down everything at that point. We can motion to continue the public hearing if we've still got some variability here. And I think the conversation I have here is that October 7th would, would be a continuation that would be amenable to Mr. Stanley and his team. Or we could make a decision tonight.
Yep. I'm willing to hold my comments if we, if we extend to October 17th, 17th, 7th, would you say?
Move to continue to October 7.
Yeah, I can move to continue to October 7.
And I can second that.
What, were we, we going to forego our comments?
No, I think we can, we can go ahead and have comments. I've got a motion in a second, but we can, we can go ahead and have comments about it.
Okay, you don't want to make?
No, I was going to hold off until October 7, see, see what we get, because these comments may be moved by that time.
Okay.
Can I, can I just?
Go, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it might be helpful for the developer to hear your thoughts, so that they're not shooting at a moving target.
Okay, fair enough. I'll start? Yeah, yeah, I have it open up. So I, you know, first off, been in Castle Hills for 26 years, moved in in 99, so I've been there for a long, long time. And I know, Mr. Stanley, we've had conversations, we've agreed, and we disagreed on a lot of things over the years. So I empathize, I understand. We've, I've been in the situation. I, I will say, I'm looking at here, and the citizens have been very forthcoming in, in requests, so I have a, a bullet list of about six I just want to talk through real quick here, a request. Minimum distance 75 foot, change in the structure of building if needed. Okay, we talked about that already. Higher burms, I think there's, there's, while I understand the need for, the request for higher burms, I think there's actually safety and drainage issues when we start to mound up dirt. I'm wondering if anybody can comment on that? Anybody from the city?
I mean, I think our engineering department would have to look at any type of birmingham, it just, it, it changes drainage and flow, so.
Okay, thank you. The point being, it's one of these things, it sounds easy enough, but it actually requires some study to see if that, that can even be possible. Benches, I think what I saw on the drawings and in the writing, the benches have been agreed to, and that we benches out, is that, is that correct, Ms. Berry?
Correct. As currently drafted, benches are required every 300 feet.
Staggered trees, I see the rendering, I see staggered trees out there. That's a minimum four inches. If they can't find four inches, they got to go bigger, right?
Correct.
Can't, can't be, can't be, I couldn't find any, I got two and a half, so it's got to be minimum four or higher. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, right. Let's see, additional trees in the median, same, same sort of thing. This is, it, it sounds like a good idea. I love to see the foliage, I love to see trees out there, but I think there's safety concerns, as well as just what will a tree, can, can trees be planted, planted that close when they get bigger? So it's easy to plant trees closer when they're smaller, but then they get bigger, and then you got trees dying, because, because they're too close together. So could we comment on 16-foot span between trees?
Yeah, so I would say we typically use a 40-foot standard tree spacing for a, a tree that will have a larger canopy, a shade tree or a canopy tree, as opposed to an ornamental tree. And the reason we do that is often the canopy spread will reach, when it's mature, 40 feet. If you plant them much tighter, they tend to, to shade each other out, and it's not as good for the health of the trees long term.
So the 40 feet is consistent with, with other areas in the city that's, that's been agreed to already? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then homeowner representation to give inputs on landscape design. I think that's something out of the control of counsel. I would, I would encourage you to talk with Mr. Stanley to make that happen, but I don't think we can mandate that sort of thing. But those are the bullet points that I have. And I'll, I'll see.
Thank you. Kristen?
Well, I wasn't going to get that detailed with it, but I did want to just provide some context for where I, you know, I, I appreciate everything that this, this team has done. has done in Castle Hills. Castle Hills is beautiful, so you all have done a fantastic job. I do think, I'm happy to see there being some collaboration between the developer and the neighborhood. Quite frankly, I've been up here either for P&amp;Z or council for the past decade, and I, I've seen a few where the, the developer and the neighborhood just refuse to work together. And so I'm, I'm happy to see that, that there looks like there is consensus on both sides to try to work together to come to a nice solution. I think boiling all of this down, you know, well, I'll start with the traffic study. I, I understand there was a traffic study, and so that was at one point taken into account, likely when we put together our thoroughfare plan as well for, for, you know, some of the collector streets and things through here. So, and this property has been zoned for multifamily for a very long time. So I, I feel confident, I also think that that's probably something that the traffic study will all be sorted out once we get into site plan for this. So if there are additional turn lanes or street upgrades that have to be made based on a traffic study, that will come at the site plan phase. The site plan will not be approved without a traffic study and those improvements. So I think we could, as, as part of the zoning, I don't think maybe the traffic study is something that would hold up a zoning case. What it boils down to me, it sounds like the thing that's the, the, the biggest issue is that buffer space between the homes, the single-family homes and where this multifamily is gonna go. And, you know, I, I get it, because I, I look at, I've seen several graphics, one of them had some pretty ponds. I know if I were in the shoes of the buyer of the home, I would think, you know, this is gonna be amazing, and, and I would feel, I would feel that it's kind of been changed out from underneath me, and so I do understand. I also understand that with the addition of the townhomes, which reduces the, the density of this development, takes some of that, the burden of the dense, the, you know, the traffic on the streets, it, it helps relieve some of that. But it does take more space. So I would love it if, if there was any way that we could find to, I mean, I know we can't get that 150 or 200 feet, but if we could, and it sounds like maybe the neighborhood is saying, we're okay with, if you can get us to 75 feet, we could get behind this. And I think we're at 50 feet right now. I, I'm really hoping that that's something that is doable and can happen, and I think that might be kind of the, if we can get there, I, I could support it, because I, I think the neighborhood would be much more happy with that as well.
Councilmember Jones?
So I appreciate all the sides coming together and talking to each other. I agree with Councilmember Green where it sounds like we're at about 25 feet apart right now in the spacing, and we can get as close as we can with that. I think while I appreciate and I understand the frustration with the builder and what they, and what the promises that they made, we can't, we can't, we're past that point now. We're, I'm a guy who tries to keep it real simple for myself, so not making, life makes things hard itself. You have the original plan, which does not need any, any help from us, which would make, take that, that buffers on that they have and make it private, but it sounds like we're almost there. So I, I want to really impress upon all the parties, like, we have the original plan that doesn't, that doesn't need any, any, any help from, from council or any approval from council, I'm sorry. And we have this plan that we're working out, and it's, it's sort of adjusting to something that's reasonable for everybody. You know, I would hope with the continuance that we can find a, a resolution. This, this traffic study is going to happen before anything else is finished, but like, you know, this is one of those things where every, nobody's gonna be super happy, but it's, in the end, it'll be, I guess, a mediated resolution where everybody kind of comes away with a little bit of what they want. Because that, that's where we're at. We're either at all or nothing, you know, if we, if we, if the developer goes back to the original plan development, it's, it's done, it's, then you're not gonna be happy. So I, I really want to work with both sides to say, please work together and try to, try to find something that's reasonable for, for both sides. You gotta think about the developer, he does, he, he's trying to meet you there, you know, you're, it sounds like we're at 25 feet, we know the traffic study is gonna happen before, before it gets done, so that, that's just my, my word, because, you know, at some point the decision is gonna have to be made. We want to make a decision that, that works for everybody if we can.
Councilmember Kate?
I'm not gonna repeat what everybody has said, just to hear myself talk. If we can get to 75, I'm in. If we can get to 75.
Councilmember Meredith?
Yeah, I'm not gonna go, go back either and go everything, but I, I do think, I do appreciate the collaborative effort between everybody. I do appreciate what Mr. Stanley has and his group have done. I think there might be a sweet spot somewhere between 65 and 75 feet that needs to be worked out, but I think, I do think a little bit more space would, would help the residents. And I, I think maybe if you can, if there's another opportunity to have a community meeting, maybe break down the, the traffic study, this, the current traffic study and a little more reader's digest kind of version for, and go over some bullet points with them. So that would be my comments.
Councilmember Tori?
Well, I just want to, I just want to say that I too appreciate the effort that both, both sides of this, and more than both sides, have put into coming to agreement. I don't have any, I don't have any more comments than that. I just appreciate the, the work that's been done, and I, I do, I do like the idea of coming to some agreement at some sweet spot between the, between the 50 and 75.
I don't typically get to vote, except in a tie, but I do get to speak, so I will, I'll tie a bow on this. There are three things that I don't think have been touched on that I, I do want to bring out. Number one is, this does create public space as proposed, which helps with the city's 10-minute walk to a park initiatives. There is the potential to have a park desert out there, so I do appreciate that. And that, from a city holistic view, makes a lot of sense to me, to be able to create more open space in that regard. So I think that's an important caveat to this, because as, as planned, the one that we, that can go through tomorrow, that's not public space. So, so that to me is, I think, important. Number two, being a desert rat, I grew up in the desert, for those of you who don't know. I love the pictures of pretty lakes and ponds, but I know what they actually are in Texas. They are detention, and they become muddy messes, and eventually they won't be ponds because we won't have enough water to keep them full. We're, we're gonna be adding millions of people over the next 30 years to North Texas, over, almost doubling in size. And so while I appreciate the pretty pictures, I just don't think that that's a realistic expectation is to have ponds there of, of any type. We might have something for a while, but I just don't know how realistic that is. So I, I try not to, try not to hang my hat on those, those types of graphics. I was also, number three, I was taught many years ago that when we're negotiating, sometimes we just get to a point where we have to split the difference of the difference. And we know that there's a 50-foot difference here in mindset somewhere, or 25-foot, sorry, 25-foot difference in mindset here. So maybe it comes down to simple math, and it's a, it's 12 feet or 20 feet or something like that, but I, I, at some point, nobody's gonna be happy in this conversation. I, I know that. So the question that becomes is, you know, where, where can everybody be happy and understand that the developer absolutely has the right to go back and do exactly what they have on paper with the multifamily, the way it's already set up? And if the neighborhood's good with that, then so be it. That's, that's part of the conversation and is available as well. So that's my two cents for what it's worth. With that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion, I think everybody, unless anybody has another comment to add to this. I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, we gotta close?
You already have a motion.
Oh, do we, oh, we did it to, to a public hearing for October 7th, that's right. So I have a motion and a second at this point, counsel. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously to continue the public hearing to October 7th, 2024. Mr. Stanley, I hope you have some direction. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item C2, public hearing, consideration of ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2024-25 tax rate. In accordance with state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposed tax rate for the 2024 tax year. Section 26.05D of the Texas Property Tax Code requires a governing body to hold a public hearing to adopt a tax rate for the current tax year. If the proposed rate exceeds the lower of the voter-approved or no new revenue rate. The proposed tax rate was recommended by city council at the budget workshop held on August 10th, 2024. The total tax rate proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 is .422435 cents. This is an increase of .003356 from the prior year rate of .419079. The proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue rate of .408408 by 3.43%, but does not exceed the voter approval rate of .422435. Since this proposed rate exceeds the no new revenue rate, specific language is required by ordinance. The vote of this ordinance must be a record vote and approved by at least 60% of the members of the governing body. For the city of Louisville, this would equal at least five voting members. Motion to adopt the ordinance must be made using specific language found in the recommendation below. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance adopting the fiscal year 24-25 tax rate with the following motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .422435, which is effectively a 3.43% increase in the tax rate. The public hearing is now open. City secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion about the tax rate.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.42435, which is effectively a 3.4% increase in the tax rate.
Okay.
And that's a .422435 and a 3.43, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the city of Louisville, Texas for the year 2024-2025, upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the charter provisions and all ordinances of said city, providing repealer, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item three, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville by amending fees related to administration, community relations, and tourism, engineering, finance, neighborhood and inspection services, parks and recreation, and public services, and authorizing existing fees as presented in the attached fee schedule attachment B. A public hearing on the fiscal year 24-25 fee schedule is being held to provide an opportunity for public comment. As part of the annual budget process, changes to the fee schedule based on analysis of current charges as compared to cost recovery goals and/or comparison to surrounding entities is conducted. In addition, fees are reviewed to make sure they are still applicable. Resulting modifications are proposed by the departments. Actual fee schedule information is located on the city website within the finance section. This repository is maintained by the city manager's office. Proposed updates in this year's fee schedule include changes to administration, community relations, and tourism, engineering, finance, neighborhood and inspection services, parks and recreation, including hedrick house rentals, and public services. Counsel, it's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above and reauthorize all existing fees. We now have a public hearing, it is now open. City secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't.
All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
And reauthorize the?
And reauthorize.
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption and reauthorize all existing fees.
Second.
Motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville by amending fees related to administration, community relations, and tourism, engineering, finance, neighborhood and inspection services, parks and recreation, and public services, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Councilmember Kate? Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you, counsel. Item D, visitor-citizen forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will allow five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, a city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City secretary, do we have any visitor-citizen comment?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item E, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests, city secretary?
No pulls and no e-comments, sir.
Counsel, do we have any requests? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, regular hearing, seven. Consideration of a resolution of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, casting the city's vote for the Region 8 director of the Texas Municipal League Board of Directors and providing an effective date. And I apologize, I don't have the names of the four in front of me. Have you got that?
Yeah.
There we go. The city of Louisville is being asked to cast its vote for the Region 8 director on the TML Board of Directors. Texas Municipal League has 15 substate regions, and Louisville is represented by Region 8. The purposes of this region, of the regions are to promote interest in municipal government on a regional level, facilitate the exchange of information among cities in the region, and assist the TML Board of Directors in formulating policy that represents the diverse interests of the state. Each TML member city is entitled to one vote, and votes are due by October 3rd, 2024. And it's recommended that the city council consider the resolution casting Louisville's vote for TML Region 8 director. I spoke with Mayor Andy Nolan, who is heavily involved in Region 8. She recommended that we look to vote for Mr. John McKenzie, council member from Hurst, as the incumbent. I also feel that the city of Hurst has similar alignment to the issues that the city of Louisville has, so that also makes, makes sense to me. So I would, I would be appreciative if we could recommend our vote go to John McKenzie.
I move to approve the resolution casting Louisville's vote for John McKenzie for TML Region 8 director as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, consideration of ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024, by providing supplemental appropriations to various funds, providing an effective date, declaring an emergency. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the fiscal year 23-24 adopted budget to include all supplements and changes approved by city council through the fiscal year. Appropriations include the routine supplements completed each year for prior year encumbrances, purchase orders, that overlap into the next fiscal year. Items presented in the mid-year report in May, other individual items as requested throughout the year, and appropriations that correct year-end balances. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024, by providing supplemental appropriations to the various funds, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item G, reports. These are reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I'm gonna start to my right with Councilmember Meredith.
First of all, I want to give kudos to the staff for the PBRs and parade and the event Saturday, probably one of my favorite events of the year. I look forward to that event every year. I know some of those folks were probably there till midnight and beyond. That's, that's a lot of work, a long day for some of those folks. Some, some library events for the week. Talk Like a Pirate Party for children age 6 to 8, Thursday, September 19th, 4:30 to 5:30. Bennett Program.
six to eight, Thursday, September 19th, 4:30 to 5:30, Bennett Program Room, free ticket required. Help, I need a job for teens, 13 to 18, Thursday, September 19th, 6:30 to 7:30, Bennett Program Room, no registration required. Demystifying sewing patterns for makers age 12 and up, Friday, September 20th, 3 to 4 p.m. The Hive Maker Space, Space, no registration required. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember Torrey?
First of all, I, I will echo council member, uh, Meredith's comments about the PBR. Um, kudos to everyone involved. It was, I always enjoy that, uh, very much. I, I'm, I'm sorry we wasn't able to get on a, a bull this year, but maybe, maybe in the future, could do it again. Anyway, uh, I do have some, uh, items for the Louisville Grand Theater, uh, activities. First of all, performances coming up. Uh, Roald Dahl's Matilda, the musical, presented by this, the Liberty Christian Upper School Theater Department, uh, September 19th and 20th. The Conexiones Culturalis, uh, in the Heights, presented by the Steve Louisville, September 29th. And as always, the acoustic jam sessions on Friday nights from 6 to 9. And then there are two exhibitions currently going on. Sacred Lands of the American Indian paintings by Francesca Di Attra Romano, presented by the city of Louisville through October 5th. And Postcard Salon, works by Alfred Sheen Ferrani, presented by the city of Louisville through September 28th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Nothing? You sure? I mean, have another round?
No reports.
Thank you.
Just the lake level reports. We're at 95% now, 520.94 feet.
Thank you. Jim?
Chief?
We've had a busy couple of weeks around the police department. We swore in, uh, five total officers over the past two weeks that have, uh, two for lateral transfers and three from the academies that we've been able to graduate. So our staffing is looking good. Um, in addition to the encryption of our public radio systems that was completed last week and our RMS and CAD switchovers that are currently in progress. So we appreciate everybody's patience as we work through this. This morning, our CAD, uh, systems were turned off. We were all dressed up with nowhere to go because it took a couple of hours for us to get that system to actually power down. However, powered down and back up very seamlessly. Um, so we are in that progress now and we expect it all to come off on time. So thank you for your patience. So, thank you.
All right, a couple of quick things here. We have Western Days coming up. So this is not, uh, this weekend, but next weekend. And part of that, we have the Dunk Tank. We get to go out and dunk your favorite, uh, council members. Um, I think that's, is it all on Friday? I think all the council members on Friday and mayor on Friday? Awesome.
Yeah, they're all on Friday. Probably a recap of time from staff would be, would be handy as we get a little closer.
Yep, would be great. Um, do we have another meeting between now and Western Days?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't think so.
We do. Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah, there's one special call meeting.
Okay, very good. All right. And then the United Way Pie Your Council Person, uh, event that's going on, uh, don't, don't, uh, don't forget to go out there and vote. Uh, I think somebody's been posting on social media quite a bit to, uh, to go out there and, uh, and, and speak with the dollars to a, to a great fund, uh, for United Way contributions. All, all funds go to United Way.
And, and that's the special call meeting is the pie in the face.
Oh, very good. Okay. Yeah. All right. So it's coming up then. It's coming up shortly. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
Yes, I will be here on Monday to see Patrick get a pie in the face. I have no report.
Councilmember Jones?
I would hate for council member Green to be at the bottom of the list. Let's help her out and let's, let's help her climb that list a little bit. I'll, I'll, I'll definitely do, make sure we get her in the third place.
When is the cutoff time? The like last minute, like right before the pie in the face.
Really?
So we stop off at the bank and just go.
Just, just, just dollar, dollar, dollar bills. Yep.
Now I've got strategy going like ping pong in my head. Um, this weekend, TCAP. TCAP is partnering up with, um, Animal Services at Jean Carey Animal Services, uh, Center for some very, very nicely priced vaccinations. So let's get them all in there and let's get those pets vaccinated. That's all I've got to say.
Well, um, we also have a staff pie in the face competition. Um, I purposely started this council things to take deflect off of me. So this is good, but I'm still, I think I might still be in the front running to also get it. So Patrick, you and I might be there together.
Oh, good. Yay. And there's claps.
Thank you, Steve. Second, I guess he really wants to see me get it. Um, and second off, I wanted to do a shout out to our police department, our fire department, um, and our IT department for this CAD RMS system. If you remember, when I applied for the city manager position, one of the questions was, what are you got, what are you going to have to do in your first, um, 90 days? And one of the answers was, we have to figure out what we're doing with this CAD RMS system. So that was two and a half years ago. That is two and a half years that Chris Lee has been working on renegotiating, navigating this, and our legal team has helped him. Um, and, uh, and really the answer we kept saying along the way is we will not take anything less but than, than complete perfection before you come. Obviously, knock on wood. I mean, there's, uh, there, there could be mistakes that happen and things we have to work through, but, um, we have really, uh, towed the line on making sure we held this, uh, person, this company accountable. So I appreciate Chris Lee. I appreciate our police department, our fire department, and our legal department especially.
Nothing easy about a software migration. So, um, so a couple of quick things. Number one, thank you so much for, uh, those of you who have donated, uh, and giving pie in the face recognition to the at least three other council members ahead of me. Um, these folks who sit up here, our council, are amazing. They deserve all the recognition. I am more than happy to sit back and, and watch on this particular one. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, and keep up the great work for, for all these wonderful council members. Um, there, there is Dunk Tank, uh, Western Days. So if you want to, uh, get people in a different fashion, uh, you will absolutely be able to do that for all of your, uh, most of your city council at that one. I will be at that one. So sinus headaches all around. Yay. Uh, we are doing some peanut butter collection. Uh, so if you do have any, uh, peanut butter when you go out grocery shopping over the next week, uh, we're collecting, uh, peanut butter for the North Texas Food Bank, the Mayor's Peanut Butter Challenge. Um, and so if, uh, you want to bring, uh, any, they'll, they'll take any and all kinds of peanut butter and, uh, just drop it off at the city manager's office here at city hall. Um, and we'll be taking those up until the last day of the month. Uh, with that...
Before you go, Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind everyone, if you, if they wanted to get you with a pie in the face, how much you love pumpkin spice. So I just want to remind them.
I, I believe that would require an upcharge by the bylaws. Um, but...
We could manage that.
I'm really more of a peanut butter chiffon guy. So it's just... Uh, with that, we're going to move into closed session. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551.074 Personnel, City Attorney Elizabeth Plaster, City Manager Claire Powell, and Municipal Court Judge Brian Holman, City Council reserves the right to adjourn in the closed section at any time. And so we will be doing so now. All right, council, uh, we are now back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move to amend the city attorney's employment agreement effective October 1st, 2024, to provide that she shall accrue vacation leaves, sick leave, and holidays at the same rate as other general government employees, and that the use and payment of said leave shall be in accordance with current city policy for all full-time employees as it now exists or may hereafter be amended by city council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council, another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to increase the total compensation effective October 1, 2024 of the city attorney by 8.05%. The city manager by 8.12% and the municipal judge by 3%.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. As there is no further action to be taken at tonight's city council meeting, we stand adjourned. 8:16 p.m.